A man who is doing his best to make sure that every adult child will get a qualitative, unqualitative education. Ladies and gentlemen, Congregate Adams and Leo Oshomole. Can we please give him a round of applause? National anthem, please. Our eyes so on that chart. And you are so lovely. To say that I'm not sad. If all that's present and there. I live all for me. Oh, so sad. I believe. So sad without a mind. One day, she'll marry freedom. It's a unity. At this juncture, to me, in the opening prayer, I want to invite representing the Christian Association of Egyptians, the chapter reverend for the festival of Maan, and also Haji Fatayin, our lady, the chief of ma'am of the name. Another rise to pray. The name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, the God. My God, thank you for bringing all of us here together this morning. This course, I share my hand on physical tissue. That failed our president, a future generation of adult sons and daughters. The educational sector, the prayer of my God, that will be because of this celebration. You are endowed over the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit brings the gift of peace, understanding, calmness. May all this gift be manifested today, Lord, so that we all agree on how to move the state forward for the Bala Naim in the educational sector. We pray for our young generation. Guide them, lead them, save the first thing that destroyed their future and destroyed their happiness. Bless the state government and all those who understand that they have the wisdom to know this issue so that our children will be educated and go for the sweet atmosphere and become proud sons and daughters of the state. Bless our teachers, who are making their great sacrifices for our children. Be with them, Lord, with their effort and belief, and God bless the goal of their hands. My God, bless our family today. They be happy, they be peaceful, they be fruitful, as does the surprise of our Lord. Amen.
I was in the life in Asia, in China, in the United States, in the United States, in America, bless all the citizens in the states, the government officials, the citizens, and the university leaders of America. The country that we are in, our window, and every hospital we find, it's all in our hands, and we put the best of the body. For Allah, bless all the children of this, of this state, who will be focused on those later in the year ahead. Omaghita Allah, let everyone of us in the U.S.A. protect us.
We, we, the deputy speaker. Honorable Evarin. The members of the U.S.A. Assembly. Here present. We. My Lord, the president of the customary Court of Appeal. The chief of staff, the head of service. Let me respectfully observe all the protocols. His Royal Majesty, Omunobade, who will follow the Obama opinion, Obama Adombele. I am sure he is here very deeply represented by a number of palace chiefs. All the Enigies here present, Gourmies. Here present, Ogadus, here present, all our royal fathers and traditional rulers. Let me also specially welcome all our leaders, leaders of civil society groups, leaders of various professional groups, market women, parents, members of parent teachers association, organized people, ladies and gentlemen. Let me thank all of you for honoring our invitation to this town hall meeting. I appreciate that at this time of the day, on the working day, all of you here, or at least majority of you here, who are either self-employed or employed by someone, you have had to make sacrifices, leaving your jobs to be here, to be part of this town hall meeting. I appreciate your sacrifice, and I do hope that the outcome of this interaction will justify the sacrifices that you have made individually and even collectively. You will agree that this is the second town hall meeting we have convened over the past twelve months to focus exclusively on the matter of education, particularly basic education and even higher education, up to senior secondary school level. You will recall that the first meeting we had in this hall, we don't mind for the issue of repositioning the educational sector, having made substantial investment in physical infrastructure. We have rebuilt hundreds of schools across the one ninety-two wards, across the eighteen local government areas, and across the Tirisian interior district. We have spent resources to ensure that these schools that we have built are as comfortable as it can possibly be. Indeed, this hall, Imagweho Hall, is perhaps one of the outstanding testimonies that practically demonstrate the kind of investment we have made in our secondary schools. This is not the only hall. During my tour and the bus, we had a session at Idia College Hall, and many told me they thought that was the best hall ever. I don't know what they say when they now see this one. At Maria Goroti Secondary School, we also have a hall that I believe is just as beautiful. Just to say that I cover the states, we have chosen to intervene decisively by making the right investment in physical infrastructure. But the most important infrastructure that defines the future of nations is their human capital. Unless we make the right level of investment in our human capital, we will not even be able in the long run to maintain order infrastructure, whether it is road, their schools, their hospitals, you name it. Because it is the quality of your human capital that will ultimately drive development. And that is why we can't possibly spend too much time on the question of lean solid foundation. In all the countries of the world, there are various levels of development in the area of education. Some are maintaining hundred percent literacy level. Some are below average. But there is no country that I know of in which all citizens, including the ones that are maintaining hundred percent literacy level. There is no school in which anybody is a graduate or everybody is an H and D holder. The word is unanimous that a child is entitled as of right to what we now generally refer to as basic education, which is primary school for the first six years and at least junior secondary school, GSS one to GSS three. In Nigeria, governments over the period has since decreed that universal basic education should not only be free, but should be compulsory. Which means if we have the right level of political will across the country, any child of school age who is not in school, the logic of compulsory basic education is that he will be forced to go to school, and anyone preventing him or her from going to school will be there to it according to law. This is a promise of universal basic education. But for us as governments to have moral authority, to compare parents, to send their children to school, we also have obligation to ensure that in the first instance that those schools are there and that the schools are sufficiently enabling, that we have teachers qualified, well-informed, able and willing to teach. But we have this in place, then we have every right to compare parents, to send their children to school. The good news is that in this part of the country, a U.S.A., even the poorest among us, even those in so-called remote rural areas, they all readily appreciate the need to send their children to school. Indeed, across the Tirisian interior district, across the eighty wards, I have found, and I know for a fact, that many rural communities over the years, where governments fail to set up schools, they have had to raise money from their work-to-do sons and daughters to build what usually refer to as community schools, community primary schools, and community secondary schools. And to show that our people recognize the value of education, where schools do not have enough teachers, it is on record that many of our communities, including remote rural communities, poor as they may be, they have had to raise money from their very meager income, sometimes to contribute to retain NYSE teachers or even hire teachers to get them to teach in their schools. So we, we do not need in this part of the state to go out there to sermonize to our people. Our people understand the need for basic education. It is in appreciation of this part, but as I said earlier, we have spent substantial resources over the past five years to rebuild and reposition our primary schools, junior secondary schools, and senior secondary schools. This is still work in progress because we still do have many schools that we are yet to cover because of budget constraints. But if we sustain the present level of investment over the next few years, even if we won't finish building the schools, we will add substantial numbers to the ones already built. Your Royal Highness, let me also share with you the fact that in our capital budget over the past five years of my stewardship, outside road, infrastructure, and erosion control, the highest allocation has consistently gone to education in all our capital projects because of the reasons I had given earlier. It will also interest me to know that over the past five years, on our recurring expenditure, both at level of the state and local government, the highest allocation has gone to schools, to the educational sector. So there is no better evidence of our commitment to education than looking at our budget and seeing the amount of resources that were allocated to that sector, vis-à-vis what has gone to other sectors. However, five years down the road, it is time to ask questions. How far, how far have we gone in our determination to reposition education? How do we measure progress? Do we measure progress by looking at the beautiful schools that we have built? Red roofs all over the place? I think all of that can be considered as input. The best way to measure is to look at the output. Are our children doing better now in examinations? What is now our performance level in WAE and NECO examinations as a result of this massive investment? Are our pupils better taught, adequately better in external examinations as a result of this investment? Year in, year out, across Nigeria, we get screaming headlines suggesting that the rate of failure in our secondary schools, in WAE examination and NECO examination, has reached an alarming level. I understand last year about eighty-two percent, eighty-seven percent or so failed WAE examination. But even those that passed, our universities do not trust the judgment of WAE, which is why they have introduced post-UME. So there is no question that there is serious crisis in the educational sector. The response of the average Nigerian elite and of the Nigerian political class is to cool themselves out of this national embarrassment. Those of us who can afford it, we send our children to high-profile primary schools and secondary schools. Those who cannot afford high-profile primary schools and secondary schools, they send their children to what I call mushroom primary schools and secondary schools. Schools that are ill-equipped, poorly trained teachers, are here charging exorbitant fees. But our people believe that if public education has collapsed and since they are determined to educate their children, then they must look for resources to send their children to private schools. As a product of free education, I have a duty to restore the ladder with which we climb in our time. And we all know that the only way to secure upward mobility for the poor communities, for children of the poor, is through sound basic education. There could be miracles in life for individuals, but it is limited to what miracles can do. It is good to have faith, but it is even better to have faith and as well as work hard to actualize your dreams. So I believe that for us in the U.S.A., as I have argued time and time again, our portion is not to lament this national decadence. We must find courage to begin, to find lasting solutions to the problems that stare us in the face. The last time we met here, we explained why we choose to carry out some verification. People were asked to produce their primary school living certificate among other details that we're looking for. Some wondered what was the relevance of asking for primary school living certificate? After all, it is not a requirement for teaching. But we did explain that there were crises in the system. We had people older than me who still claim that they are older fifty. And the total matter is there is something about age in relation to teaching. At seventy, your bones will not just be as strong as the bones of fifty-five-year-old man or woman. And you are expected to stand in a classroom and teach and impart knowledge. There was a comedian who said, "This is the record where everybody aspire to do anything. There are people ought to know what they are suitable for and what they are not caught after." Very interesting comedian. And he said, he was surprised, he went to his school and he saw his stammerer, who insists on teaching English. And he drew some marble, some drawings of some animals, and he was to teach the pupils how to pronounce hippopotamus. And then he started by, "I, I, 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 I." Teles, teles. And the comedian said, "There are jobs that are good for stammerers, but certainly not teaching." So when they now ask, the pupils to say what they heard from their teacher. They have to learn to stammer. Now to spread it was even more problematic. So just to say that teaching is a unique profession, and every one of us will really appreciate that. And it is in appreciation of the uniqueness of teaching and of teachers in our system that in the public service, we now have what we call teachers' special allowance, which include an element that is called edutment, inducing them to teach and inducing them to accept posting to rural communities. However, in the course of this verification, I shared with you last time some of the startling revelations. We found that about one thousand three hundred of our primary school teachers had issues, either that they swore to force affidavit, reducing their age some as much as ten years, and because they have reduced the age so much on signing their primary school living certificate, it would appear that they were, they had had their primary school's living certificate before they were born, or that they were born, one year later, they finished their primary school living certificate. But we're not talking the issue of age falsification. We also find out that many of our teachers claim to have finished primary schools and signed for primary school living certificate examination fifteen years after they had started teaching. Many of them, they purport to obtain this certificate in the very school in which they have been teaching over the past ten years. Now the question is, did they actually sign side by side with their pupils to write primary school examination? How did that have happened? Why did they have to obtain primary school living certificate after being employed as teachers? If they had TC two, did they obtain this TC two without first attending a primary school? Well, they have a couple of suggestions. Some say maybe someone may have misplaced his primary school certificate. But we know it true that even if you misplace your PhD certificate, all that you are required to do is to go to the police station, report the fact of the loss or the death of primary school living certificate examination ten years, fifteen years after he had already been employed as a teacher and obtaining this certificate in the school in which he had been teaching for the past ten or fifteen years. Those involved in this and other questionable issues amount to about one thousand three hundred teachers. And we'll be trying to find out why, why they do change your age. However, we have not dismissed any of these persons. We didn't dismiss them because we tried to find out. Because only reckless person, as our people say, you know, a white guy, if you are walking on the street and you fell into a port hole and you are injured, you can go to the hospital to have a surgery. and you are injured, you can go to the hospital to have yourself treated. But the white man will turn back to fill that port hole so that no one else will fall into it. So the essence of the exercise, as I had maintained and I've been teaching, was not to suck anybody. However, we need to try to find out what happened. And that require time. It require having to interrogate or interview each of those who have cases to speak to. And so why this exercise was all? We kept these numbers in our books and we were paying them. We recall that in the course of the verification exercise, we stumbled, just by sheer accident, I had cause to interview a lady who had issues with her affidavit. The original of the affidavit says she was born in nineteen sixty-seven. The photocopy of the affidavit, it says she was born in nineteen sixty-seven. The original of the same affidavit which she brought suggests that she was born in nineteen fifty-seven, in difference of ten days. Which means by the time she will be sixty, she will actually be seventy. There are implications. But in the course of asking her simple questions, I noticed that she was unable to express herself. It was at that point, and that was not the reason I was there, I decided to ask her just to read the affidavit. I'm sure many of you watch that empowerment on television and cable news. This teacher who received edutment allowance to teach, who receives special teaching allowances, they don't know the difference between one and I. When I ask her, "No, don't be noise, it's not something to celebrate." If you clap for what is wrong, what will you do for what is right? This is not a clap session, please. I ask her to read the affidavit. Instead of, "I solemnly declare", she said, and I quote, "One so solemn." She didn't know the difference between I and one. She didn't know the difference between solemnly declare and solemn. She went on to talk about the affidavit, this one to Adonichya Prophet. "O Nisha Prophet", she meant to say province, but even the word "O Nisha" was not in the affidavit. But I suspect that is where the affidavit was forged. She insists on the check "O Nisha Prophet", and I said, "There is no O Nisha, read what is here, no word is in your head." And she insisted, "O Nisha Prophet". She didn't know the difference between registered and registered. She talked about being registered, the affidavit was registered. We can go on and on and on. Simple, this lady could not read. And if she cannot read, you don't need expert to tell you that she cannot write. And yet, our market woman at Opam Market, in rushing to the market in the morning, they will start to drop their child in the primary school where that lady is teaching or where she was teaching. And at about two o'clock, she will rush back to the school to pick the child, quote, from school, having been taught by a teacher from O Nisha Prophet. And she will do that for the next six years. And at the end of her six-year primary school leave certificate, she cannot spare mama's name. Across the country, people talking about the fact that we have graduates who can't read, who can't write, graduates that are not employable. This is the foundation. When I arrived in Edo State five years ago, Edo had become notorious for what they call miracle centers. What is a miracle center? A miracle center is where people who are conscious of the fact that they can't pass WAEC examination or NECO examination, they found criminals who set up exam wonder centers where they pay